All right. With everything under control now technically, we will open our school committee meeting. I'll call the meeting to order for Thursday, October 13th, 2022. And we'll begin with a pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
We don't. I just have a quick announcement that Andy won't be with us this evening because he has a family commitment.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Just go on.
The reason why I came tonight was to talk a little bit about the camping trip that the kids just had. I was thinking when two of my grandchildren went on it. It was 30 years ago when Trish Tanner and most you know who was Trish Halliday, before she was married, when she first came to work here. She runs the school department to let her take the sixth grade on the camping trip down Camp Nada. And she involved the whole community. They came and cooked meals and they came and taught. It was quite an undertaking by a young teacher. He'd only been here a year or two. And in my opinion, she the way she taught, that she was probably one of the best teachers that would walk the halls of this school. And when the kids went on the camping trip, I was thinking, geez. 30 years ago, Brian even on this camping trip. So you've been doing that for a whole generation. And I think sometimes people lose sight of what the kids get out of this stuff. It's far and above beyond what they'd ever learned in the classroom. And I doubt very much in another 30 years, I'll be back here talking about it. But I would really like to thank the school for continuing to support this. The kids at Brian's age and younger still talk about it, their experiences. Probably the biggest disappointment they had was having to use an outhouse. But I don't think I heard reference about that this time too. So some things haven't changed from time to time. But I would just like to thank the school for doing this for the kids because the experiences they get out of this is last a lifetime.
You know, I did that for 12 years with Trish. Yeah, unbelievable situation. I mean, it was just incredible. People came in that spoke with different things. They grew plants and astronomy. It was just all the people from the outside that came in, you know. There really was something.
Big community event. She really did a great job.
Then they used to scare me every morning going in there at 5:30 to light the ovens, the gas ovens, get on your hands and knees, the old fashioned gas stove. I waited any minute for the, there we go. Never happened, so that was good.
I don't want to take away from John Sundar. I just, as a citizen and a parent, grandparent, sometimes you don't hear too much about the happiness that the school brings you.
Yep.
Probably some of the few times you've cooked too, wasn't it?
It was a lot of fun. I had a lot of fun. Yep.
A joke between us, right?
A lot of fun. Yep.
Can I?
Yes.
I went on the trip. This is my first camping trip with the school. And what the children, I feel like they got out of it. When I was walking with them, one of them mentioned this is the most challenging experience of my life as they were climbing the mountain, so.
I did hear about the mountain climb. But they all lived through it.
Well, this is the best Mike's look since we've gone, so he can dial that mountain.
Thank you.
I'm glad they can continue it.
Yes, right.
I have a question about, we have gotten this from Kama Bangor, Critical Social Justice in Main K through 12 education. I don't know if that made circulation as of yet. But there's a couple of sections. There are three sections here that are kind of interesting. Section one, the challenge of critical social justice in main education. What is, and what is critical social justice? I will get into it at this point. Section two, sexualizing education and sowing division among students. And then it goes on to tell you about who promotes CSJ in main schools. The federal government, main chief executive, the main department of education, the attorney general, the legislature, local school districts, education nonprofits. And I was just wondering if you guys had heard anything about this? And if you have.
Haven't heard about the book.
Never seen that.
Is that an informational pamphlet?
It is, and I can possibly make copies for everyone. I haven't finished reading it.
Oh, no, no problem, Ray. No, I just, I'm not familiar with it.
Did that come to, did that come to the select board at town hall?
No.
It came to you?
It came through me through the Republican committee at York County.
Do you want a copy, Miss Lo?
You have a copy? You can get on. Oh, no, you know what? Maybe at some, thank you, Jennifer. But at some point, I can probably get one from, probably from Ryan. Be my guest. When you're done with it?
Sure.
Okay.
The answer to that question is that the local school committee right now makes the decisions in the schools as to what's going to be taught, correct?
Curriculum is per the
Curriculum.
School board's purview. You set the curriculum and also needs to be in compliance with state law. And you can't do anything that's unlawful.
So there wouldn't be any withholding of either state or federal money? If this went into law, I'm, guys were told you had to teach this? And I'm just, these are just questions that come up to my mind.
Sure, I mean, there, you, I think right where you're heading is probably the right direction. If a school department, the only stick the state really has on a school department is funding, right? So if you don't do something, you don't comply. Generally, it's your, it's your state subsidy that the state would look at. I think we're a long ways from that with something like this, to be honest with you. Because I'm not familiar with if there's any laws being passed. I'm not familiar with the material. But I think you're heading down the right area. If there's a law that we don't follow and we're supposed to, really the stick that the DOE has is state funding. But we get compliance reviews in special education and nutrition, chapter 125 school approvals yearly with me. And we've always passed muster with those kinds of things under the current state laws.
Anybody else?
We haven't seen that come through from the main DOE anyway. You know, because we get information as school board members and I haven't seen that.
I think some of these issues that your pamphlet is going to be talking about are much more prevalent in large school districts than they are with us here in Acton. Fortunately, I think the fact that we're a small district, we don't have some of the problems and issues that larger school districts have.
Well, that was the issue that we're televised every day about certain banning of certain schools, certain books, you know, to schools and something like that. And I had to deal with, you know, educating younger children on sexual aspects. And I just didn't, you know, understand, you know, that was going to be effective in this school.
Dr. Seuss is still here, I think.
He is.
Thank you, Ray, for bringing that up. Any other public comments? Okay, then let's move on. And I will look for celebration of learning.
Patty's going to take this piece. But could I just please take a minute to just talk about Patty? One of my favorite subjects lately. I was going for a two-day camping trip in this place, ran on all, probably better. There are probably people saying, why don't you stay in your tent, Ryan? Patty ran the place and she did an excellent job. I can't tell you that when I came back, everybody said, Patty's great, Patty's been doing a great job. And I just felt so comfortable being away. I was a phone call away, never got a call. So just to let you know, Patty's hitting the ground running around here. She's doing great.
So now the floor is yours.
All right. I went, I interviewed, interviewed some of the kids and a couple of the teachers about the iReady Math program. And this is what they said. So tell me what you like best about the games in iReady Math?
It helps me with multiplication.
Which games?
The pizza one and the cookie one.
What do you do in the pizza game?
You help the customers buy, you set a price and then they ask you how many and you have to times the price by that.
And what else do you have to do in that pizza game?
You have to save, you have to save your money to get upgrades and you have to buy more ingredients.
The thing that I love most about iReady Math is it puts students in charge of math time. It's a time for students to just come forward, give out a strategy on how they solve a tricky math problem. The best part about that iReady time is other students in the classroom get to see what other friends did for a strategy. And then I instantly see those light bulbs go off and they're like, whoa, that's the strategy I was thinking of. So I think it puts a lot of the energy back to the kids during math time.
What I like about it is that, and there's a button where it's like my games and you can play a game like, and it's still like mathable, but there's these fun games that you can play instead of doing the math.
How about you, Lee?
I like how it adjusts for grammar.
I love using iReady Math. I think it allows the kids to show their work in a way or iReady in different ways and really work together to try to find these solutions for a problem and also coming up with their own ideas along the way. I think iReady really encourages students to make their first attempts and try their best using any kind of background knowledge that they have. And then they kind of grow from there. And then the kids also love the online portion of iReady as well. It's very engaging for the students and I love teaching math.
I like the games a lot, but when there's, most importantly, the pathway in the teacher's assignment. When you get a question wrong, you learn from your mistakes. So the next time you get it right. Every time you get it wrong, you know the right answer. So the next time you'll get it right.
Okay, Logan, tell me what you like best about iReady Math?
Because they're hard and they're tricky.
That is, that is it in a nutshell. I could not have made this without Sally Puffright. I just want to throw that out because she did it. She was very helpful. She actually put it together.
Patty's going to be doing a progress monitoring as well and give you some information in regards to our math, you know, how we're starting the year in math. But I think that was a good student and teacher testimony. Patty did a great job with the help of Sally.
I picked up my grandson from early release yesterday and brought him home and he's, he's very, you know, going to get his homework done right away so he can get everything else out of the way. So I said, what do you have to do? And he said, oh, I have a math assignment and I have to read for 20 minutes. I said, okay. So he's there working on his math assignment. And he said, does this look right, Graham? Well, you came up with the right answer, but I don't have a clue how you got there. It's not the way I, not the way I learned it, but it was, it was educational for Grammy anyway. All right. I will look now for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Moved by Mary, seconded by Jeanette. Any discussion?
I have one. Thanks to Jen Goodwin, who watched the video from our last meeting. She picked up that number, excuse me, on your minutes from last month, 8:31:22, 9.4. You'll see we hired Jenica Goslin as a kindergarten teacher.
Yep.
The only change there is the number's right. It should change to BA15. She does not have an MA15. That number would be different. So the number's correct, it's just the indicator, okay? We'll make note in the minutes that that's been changed. Awesome. Thank you, Jen Goodwin, for picking that up.
Any other? Okay, motion to accept the consent agenda, all in favor? Five, no. Okay. Do we have any questions from any of our administrators or superintendent on any of the reports? So the computers are almost ready to be sold, Mike.
Yeah, I'll ring to make the announcement until after the meeting tonight through the process of distributing them.
Yep.
Policy.
Yep. Okay. All right, then, progress monitoring. We'll now move on to Patty again for diagnostic results.
This doesn't have any volume to worry about, this stuff.
Right.
Can you see through this? If I could just.
Yeah.
This is library?
Yeah, I see, I see a book.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Is this library?
Uh, yes, library.
Usually have the kids read the number to me.
5253.
Yeah, they're really good at it. Say it half the time, they'll say it before even asked. So we've spent some time, the last few erds, the last two erds, with a consultant from iReady about our math diagnostic results and about our reading diagnostic results so that teachers can start using those and using the information. And one of my questions to him was, what does the yellow really mean? So if you look at the green bar, then you have the yellow bar and the red bar. Well, the red bar are at-risk kids by domain in math. And the yellow bar, actually, it says one grade below, but it's actually those kids who are ready to learn the skills from the year that they're currently in. They just don't have that prior knowledge yet. The green indicates where the kids actually already have a prior knowledge of the standards that they're going to learn in the grade level that they're currently in. So yellow and green for us are good. The red is where the focus will be for, for kids who are most at risk. Then if you look at it by grade level, I know that every chance I can get into classrooms to help with math, sixth and seventh grade are going to be most likely where I go. Kindergarten, this is so funny because kindergarten typically does blow it right out of the water because they just do, I don't know. I mean, you look at first grade, you look at second grade, those kids are all, either have prior knowledge or they're ready to go with the current year. I've actually talked to the kindergarten teachers and the kids, because they've had pre-K, are so ready for this that they're able to accelerate some of the lessons because, you know, they don't want to hold the kids back. So this is math by grade. This is a very beginning of the year look at where we are right now. So then I looked at the reading. And the reading looks amazing too. If you look at the phonological awareness, it's all green and yellow because Jolly Phonics works. That's the program that they're using in the younger grades. Our numbers at risk of tier three interventions, which are very much one-to-one, is a very small percentage. If you look at it by grade level, we're looking really good. This was supposed to be a pilot from K to 2. The K-2 teachers were enjoying it so much and talking to the 3-5 teachers that they, the 3-5 teachers said, well, we'd like to pilot also. So what they're doing, what we have right now is a free program for a year to see if it's going to work. I've also talked with Tracy Scully, who's a 6-8 teacher. And she and I are actually meeting tomorrow so that I can show her all the resources that she has available if we continue it up through eighth grade. So they also, in reading, I'm sure that some of you with kids at home have heard about the pathway in math. Reading has a pathway also. So I'm really excited about this. I'm really excited that the teachers wanted to pilot it and see if it was going to enhance what they're doing right now. So that's where we are right now. NWEA testing is happening now. It should be finished, except for the last few that we need to make up because of sickness. We should be finished by the end of next week. So that is, that is us right now. Oh, wait a minute, I had one more. Sorry, sorry. I lied. So next steps, this is a screenshot I took. So this isn't any of our kids. This is what the teachers have available, though. They can now go into their diagnostic results. They can look at where the kids are by domain. They can then click on any of their students and drill down in to see where their challenges are. And there's a point where they can actually look for next steps and interventions if needed. So all of that is right there in this program for them. And groupings according to who needs what skill. So it's all done for them in this program. And those will be our next steps. So now I'm done.
That's great.
One of the exciting pieces is you get to see 21st century education with the integration of technology, direct instruction and text, which is great.
Well, my thing is, so in order for the kids to be doing this math, they're on the computer, correct?
No.
No.
So, so this is the thing. They're on the computer for their pathway. But the regular instruction in the classroom, when I was in the classroom, I used my computer to project what the slides were for the lesson. Because if I did that on my whiteboard, the kids could actually work on the whiteboard. So it's like having a workbook page up there. We're all working on a problem together. And it saves teacher time. Like I didn't have to write any other word problems or anything. They were just there.
Yeah.
And the kids actually have a workbook that they work in. And half the time, my kids would do two problems in the lesson as an exit slip so I could see where they were in their learning. And most of it would be done with a partner, sharing strategies and things. And then if they are in their pathway, they're on the computer, but that's the only time. Or if I assigned something in there.
Because there was just one parent who said she feels her son is always on the screen. He's screen time, screen time, screen time. And I'm like, oh.
I can tell you that, that
None?
That I know that the majority of teachers, I'm not sure all of them, I can't say all teachers, but we are very aware of how much screen time our kids are having and are very careful not to make it any more than we need to. I know especially fifth and under. I know middle school has a little bit more that they have to do in, on screen time, but for the majority of the time.
No, it was something I never had to worry about. So I never even thought about a kid being in front of the screen, whereas when they get home, they like to be in front of the screen for other reasons. So I didn't know.
Yeah, we're very aware, but only in their pathway for the iReady piece. Otherwise, it's all.
So when you say pathway, so the child gets on and he's at a certain level and then he does the problems. And if he does good, he gets to the next level. If he doesn't, he stays until he gets it kind of thing? Like is that how the computer will move him up?
Yeah, the computer calibrates itself. It moves the kids forward wherever they are. But the other piece is, is that it'll push in one area. So it looks at the diagnostic for the lowest area. It might be numbers and operations. It's going to push in that area until that child's brought up to where he or she needs to be. And then find the next lowest area and move them forward. When they take the diagnostic in January, the really fun part is watching where the dotted line is that we can see where they've jumped. And the pathway moves them forward more. So they're, it very much adjusts according to how the kids do on the diagnostic. So they're all individualized, you know? So push is where they need to.
And we can look at all of that. Interesting.
One of the things we need to consider, excuse me, for a pilot, and I'm glad that Tracy Scully, our six through eight ELA teachers meeting with Patty is, if this is going to be something that we want to bring on for next year because it's effective, then something like, we have another program that might not be used as much and it's almost a wash for the budget, they're right around the same price. So I'd recommend if this is what the staff wants and it's effective, replacing that with something else that's not being used as much because of this.
You talking the Jolly Phonics?
No, 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 no.
But when you said they're doing Jolly Phonics at the lower level, it's not called that at the higher level, correct?
No. It's Jolly Gram, switches to Jolly Grammar. And then that goes away even at grade five.
Okay.
I'm not very jolly after grade five.
I know, right? What's wrong with that?
Things change, Brett.
Things change when you're in sixth grade, man. I'm not jolly.
Jolly.
Can I ask you a question? Does this, is there an, how do I say the word? An algorithm, algorithm? Algorithm, what is it?
Yeah.
Algorithm, thank you. That recognizes each child so it can push them in the direction that it needs, that the individual child needs to go in?
Yep. So when they do the diagnostic, the program reads where their deficits are. And it actually individualizes each child's program so that one child might be really good at numbers and operations, another really good in geometry, but they're being pushed in different areas. I don't know how it does it. I'm not even going to pretend to have that. It is fascinating to watch. It's like when the NWEA calibrates. So when the kids start having problems with questions, then it drops them down a little bit and it reads information that way. The diagnostic just, it sets these kids up and you can see the progress. It's absolutely amazing.
Joyce, one of the things I mentioned when I first sat down is it's really the integration of text, which is the workbook, the computer and direct instruction. It's not one of those three legs of the stool. All three of those together that work, which is great. So it's not just one of those.
That's really phenomenal.
A lot less paper pencil, a lot of whiteboards. My kids always use whiteboards and stuff.
Anybody have any other questions for Patty? Thank you so much. It's very, very interesting. It's nice to know what's going on behind all these programs that we talk about. It's good to see the actual results of them and, yeah. All right. Committee reports, and we'll start with the superintendent's report.
Sure. Well, I, excuse me. We attended, some of us attended the form on $100,000 of unassigned school fund balance to capital reserve for both the warrant finance and then for the selectmen approximately a week ago. And I thought that went well. Thank you for being there to support that initiative. It seems like, you know, it's on the ballot. We'll see what the, what the citizens say. And if that is to be approved in November, then we'll get right to work with that. You've heard a lot about the sixth grade camping trip. I was just going to say, we're back. We got back yesterday and it all went well. And I'm pleased to announce that one of our teachers, one of our newer teachers, Mr. Nate Colpitts, who is our gym teacher and also our soccer coach, had a baby girl. On 10-5-22, Kayra Lee Colpitts. So she's in addition to the AES family. Congratulations, Nate and his family.
Any questions for Mr. Ross? Any committee reports tonight? I know we have a policy committee report because we have a little stack of policies here. And these most all have to do with special education, correct? And they've all just updating from what we've already had. So there's nothing new. We just have to vote.
Well, there is.
Right.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, you only have three policies in there.
Right.
And each one, you have like a red, one with red or blue coloring in it. And then the final version after all the changes. So, I mean, Sharon had actually gone through and down for, as part of her recertification. And so I gave you like what all the changes were. And then what it looked like when it's all done.
Some of these go back to 202, 203. I mean, they're
Time for updates. So will we be accepting these as revised?
Yes.
And we don't have to do like a first and second on these. These are just revised policies, correct? All right then, I will look for a motion to accept revised as of this date. Policy number IHBAA, referral, pre-referral of students with disabilities. IHBAA dash R, referral of pre-referral administrative procedure. JKAA, use of physical restraint and seclusion.
I make a motion. You already did.
No, I didn't make a motion.
Oh, you were just reading.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right.
She asked, she asked for the motion.
Oh, okay.
I'll look for a motion.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept these policies that were reviewed. Do I have to read the letters all over again, or are we all set?
Should be good.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Jeanette, seconded by CJ. Any discussion on any of these?
Do you have anything more to say, Mrs. Prey, about, you know, what you did?
No, I just need to submit these policies for our Department of Ed review that's coming in May.
Yep.
And when I looked at them, I thought, well, they look pretty old. So we're going to take a look at those.
Keeping up with policies is probably one of the most tedious jobs that we can have as a board. Ask him, she can tell you. She's, she's always looking at. And, you know, you, you look at your old ones, but at the same time that you're reviewing old ones, you're all the time getting new policies from the state that you have to implement. So it's, you know, it's a, it's a, yeah, it's a tedious process.
Well, these were all from 2010, so that seemed a while ago. That they should have been updated, yes.
There's a couple here from 2002 and 2004. But the book is this thick. I mean, how can you possibly, you know?
You've got to get out, get the old ones out of there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we try to do it within a decade. We have a flow chart. But just annual review when new ones aren't coming down the bike, or if we're under review and an administrator says, let's look at this. We have a sheet that we work from and I'm keeping up, every decade's difficult, like you said. Yeah.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Five and O. All right. Anything, nothing from the long-range committee?
We did not meet.
Okay.
Could I just ask, would long-range like to meet before the next meeting?
We should.
Okay. We'll plan on meeting at, we started by, you want to meet at?
4:15.
Okay.
Okay. New business, Brightspace update.
I'm going to ask Mike just to probably talk through some of this process. One of the things that the board talked about at our workshop in the summer was, you know, we probably don't, well, we were thinking, and I don't know that we need to right now, keep COVID update on our boilerplate that every month will, will be a COVID update. And we talked a little bit about maybe we have a Brightspace update. So we really haven't talked about what that might look like. And at the time in July, I didn't know what our opportunities to update would look like. What are we updating you on? So Mike has a better sense of what we can and can't do. And we're just going to have a conversation facilitated by Mike about, around the whole idea about Brightspace and what might you as a board think you need to see on a regular or semi-regular basis?
Yeah, I'd like to pull Patty in too. She's been very involved in the Brightspace deployment process. So she may have some insight as well at the teacher level. But overall, it's been a pretty successful implementation. We initiated during open house the process of accessing Brightspace through the child, through the student. Letting the child or the student be the director, the driver in the seat. Showing the parents how and what is available to them, what they see, what it looks like, how it functions and moves. And as we've progressed in using Brightspace at all levels, student, teacher, and even parent, we're discovering that the parents need to, especially those with multiple children, need to have the ability to get a bird's eye view of what their children are doing more clearly. So we've started to open the door to the parent portal, which has been a pretty smooth transition. So as we progress further down our timeline of using this product, we are now opening the parent portal up more and more, mostly starting from the upper grades and working our way down as needed. The younger grades are still probably going to drive through the student portal because the parents need to see and help interact with the child. So they'll probably utilize the child portal more, more so than the parent portal. But that is where we're at right now, is teachers are working hard at putting assignments and content into the curriculum in Brightspace, scoring and assessing, finding new tools and resources as they, as they work on their content in the curriculum. So it's still a learning experience, extremely, much so in that sense. And as we find more tools and features and resources, we're trying to find also the most efficient way to accomplish these goals. So we're trying to eliminate stress headache time as well. But as far as what the board's looking for, it'd be good input from you as to what it is that you're trying to seek or access or get feedback from or data analysis from. I've been kind of digging through what we have available for data on an administrative district level. So if you have anything specifically you want to see, I can dig into it and see what, what is available, whether or not we can accomplish this.
Can you just maybe explain a little bit of the difference between going in through the kids' portal and going in through the parents' portal? What the difference is in those two?
Yeah, I could actually, I can potentially demonstrate at the next school board meeting, the two different interfaces. I have a, on our school website, under resources, there is a Brightspace link at the top of the header, resources, Brightspace. There you'll find a few slide shows on how each portal acts and interacts. The student portal will let the child dig through each one of their content curriculum subject matters. And each one of those will have more granular pieces, whether it's an assessment or a classroom discussion, a lesson, a homework assignment, a video that the teacher wants them to review. At the parent level, you'll see just the bird's eye view of how many homework assignments your child has, how many are past due. And then you can dig into that a little deeper and see what grades were on the assignments that have been handed in, any comments the teachers may have left, any activity feed posts that the teachers may have posted in their class relating to whatever subject matter they wanted to. So the parent level is more of a bird's eye, you know, 10,000-foot view of what's going on. While the child's is more granular, deeper content enriched and filled picture of the classroom in each subject matter.
So can the people that are using the parents, or can they also use their student? Can they also go through this student one?
Yeah, they could, they could use either one.
They could use either one?
Yeah. The glitches we noticed from the parents using the student portal, especially on the phone app, or even the browser on your, on your computer, is switching between children.
It's awful.
Yeah. You've got to refresh it, you've got to log out, log back in. It's not fun. It's, you start seeing scores for your younger child's stuff on your older child's assignments. It's weird. The student app was designed for one person to use it all the time. The parent app lets you see everything, like I said, from a 10,000-foot view and dig down deeper into the details as needed.
So the parents can still see the grades that the kids got?
Yeah, they'll see the grades, they'll see the assignment, they'll see any pictures that the
It's just if they try to log in through the portal as a student, as one of their children, and then switch to the other one is when the glitches happen?
Yeah. At the 10 app. Or if they have a personal Google account and they try to get in, we use Google as an authentication method and it starts to say, you can't log in, you're not your child. So there's other little technical glitches like that. But with the parent app, the parent portal app, and even the student app, you get notifications instantly when an activity feed is updated or a lesson or assignment is posted. So it's always right there at your fingertips, too.
Again, theory, report cards could go away. That's a theory. In practice, they won't. I think people feel the need, I feel the need, that parents need a report card for now. We'll see how it goes. But real-time data is being pushed out to the parents on their students' achievement. You don't have to wait till November. You can just follow what's happening and November is just another month compared to what's happening. But I think we need to stick with some traditions for now as we transition and see how it goes.
Speaking of report cards, that's the next phase of our teacher PD. They'll learn the process of building the grade book. So we'll create a report card for the physical, paper, paper report card for the parents to have at the end of the term.
How did you find the parent instruction to go at the open house? Did you get good response on that? Was the parents coming in to learn how to use it?
Yeah, it would seem pretty positive, the parents coming in to experience the student piece.
Right.
Like I said, once they got into the student portal on their phone or on their computer, these little glitches started popping up and started becoming kind of a nuisance. So once we realized this, this problem, this issue, started promoting the parent portal. And it seemed to have been easier and more interactive with multiple children especially.
This staff and students, staff, students and parents have been very, very flexible and accommodating because as I mentioned, this is the tip of the iceberg. We're starting something new. And you don't really know what you have until you start having real teachers and real students and real parents doing things. And then you go, oh, I didn't know that would happen. So Mike is, we knew a lot about going into it, but then as things get laid out, like this grading piece and looking at a report card, that's why we're going to trial balloon sandbox some report cards because we really don't know what we don't know until we try something. And we were trying to be very honest with people that this is new. You know, a year from now, we'll have this down, but work with us. And I think people have been great and flexible and understanding.
CJ, how are you making out with it?
Well, my kids are young, so they don't really have a lot of homework assignments and stuff like the upper grades do. So I went in the first couple of weeks of school and it was like, nothing, 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 which I know everyone's just starting and they're also very young. So I was like, all right, I guess I don't have to go in three times a week like I had been planning on. So I'm sure it will, as all the teachers get into it more and they get used to it and as the kids get older, I'm sure it will be helpful. But yeah, right now, it's not as fully fleshed out as I'm sure it will be.
Yeah.
Comment question.
Yeah, so good.
So I was there for the open house. My niece goes to school and my sister. We loved the fact that you have the students kind of walk us through it. It's really exciting for them, but cool for us. We love, like, we know that there's kinks and stuff. Like, I love the potential to see because I do homework with my niece all the time. And it's really cool, like, to see what could come down the line. So at least I know that my family's really excited for what you folks are doing. We definitely appreciate, we definitely understand that there's kinks. It's technology, as we saw when we first started this meeting.
Yeah.
So, but we, at least we're very excited to see the potential for making sure that we can keep up to date on Abby's work and make sure that she's doing well. So I'd say thank you for having that be open house.
Ray, did you have something?
Yes, it's very good to hear. Username and password protected, parent-child type of situation. But are you looking, since this is a new program, what type of security do you have as far as for hackers, predators that may be able to get into the system? And I don't know if this is something that, you know, to get information on children and stuff like that.
Yeah, all of the, this is a bigger topic. But yeah, all of the tools and resources we utilize are FERPA and are abiding by the Student Privacy Act. We also utilize a single sign-on portal, especially for the children. So when they log into their computers, they have access to log into each one of their resources. And only they have the access to those resources. All of the products we utilize, as I said, are, they're FERPA compliant and they go through the Student Privacy Act. This is a database. And being part of what we started or established several years ago called Metoda. It's the Main Technology Directors Association. We are in collaboration in making sure that each one of the technology resources we use, because most of them are all cloud-based nowadays, fall within that Student Privacy Act regulations and the FERPA regulations and maintaining confidentiality with students' information.
So there's no registration of an IP address or anything like that for specific systems that are used?
Well,
Let's say, for example, a parent logging from home, they have, they have an IP address. Okay? And if someone else hacks into the system and they have a different IP address, what would, what would the system be able to do in order to prevent them from getting into the system?
What's your firewall protection for the schools? Probably the broadest question, like, how do we keep people eye school information?
Right. We have a, on both of those topics, we have a very robust firewall system in place with extensive intrusion detection and content filtering. So the children are restricted from accessing a lot of malicious sites and content. As far as children going home and utilizing these tools and resources, they, each one of the, because we don't house these programs. We aren't managing and maintaining these, these pieces of, these resources. They're, they're through companies that have these, you know, elaborate infrastructures and technology resources that we wouldn't really be able to maintain ourselves well. They abide by FERPA and the Student Privacy Act. So they would potentially collect maybe an IP address or a student number. But making the pieces connect, their systems and their firewalls and their data has to meet a strict requirement in order for them to meet the Student Data Privacy Act regulations. So
Yes, Dennis.
I got a direct question from Mike because I always like to put him on the spot. And I have to leave to take Molly home, so. What are the odds of, and I'll use Molly for example, of my grandchildren ever teaching me how to use Brightspace? I'm waiting for a technical answer there.
Yes, I hope that she shows you tonight.
She tried several times, buddy. Night, everybody.
See you later. Yeah, bye-bye.
Okay, is anything else on Brightspace from anybody? All right, well, let's move on to eight-two, which is the safety update.
The last part of the regular meeting, that's mine. Just to update the committee and guests, that fire drills have been completed. And we've also modified our secondary egress. So we have a primary egress for children and staff to go to to take attendance, make sure we have everybody and then evacuate if we need to, or wait for the fire department to come in and say, clear, it was a false alarm. And then we have a secondary egress because if they can't get out of the building to get to that spot, you need to go somewhere else and gather. And that's our secondary egress. So through some, some safety auditing, I changed the secondary egress just to get to the gravel parking lot because we've been locking the gate near the dumpster since last May. So that gate used to be how we come out. Well, now you don't want to come out if it's a lock gate. Now we're all just stuck there corralled. So that worked well. On our last fire drill last week, we practiced it and it went really, really well. So we're up to date on that. This is also, we're in October, so I'll be doing some of the safety drills announced. I like to use the word safety drill instead of lockdown for some of you that are, you know, new to hearing me talk about this. And, and there's been a lot of debate on, you know, is it traumatic for a kid to do these kinds of, you know, things in case if the place were unsafe? And I'm actually old enough to remember crawling under my desk for the nuclear bomb, you know? And that was just part of growing up. And not to say that that's not still a concern, but, you know, my pre-K teachers are And not to say that that's not still a concern, but, you know, my pre-K teachers are great. So how do you do this with the four-year-olds? Well, they make it a game. It's almost like hide and seek. Kids don't even really know really why they're doing it. They're just following the teacher's calm directions to all move to this area, like lights are off and the doors are shut, and, you know, we don't make noises and sound scary or anything. But we train our kids so that it should become muscle memory if we ever have to do this. We call them safety drills, but basically they're lockdowns. We'll be starting those announced this fall, and then slowly over the year, they become unannounced, and they become at times that people wouldn't expect, just to see that if, you know, you hear, we're going into a, I always say drill, too. We're going into a lockdown drill or safety drill at this time. If somebody's walking by this door, Miss Goodwin's going to pull the student in, they're going to go in there and hide, or wherever hiding spot is. Doesn't matter whose child it is, you're coming with me. And that's kind of, and that needs to operate at any minute, and I think it can operate at any minute. I think we're pretty well trained in that area. Doors have been, we've checked opening the year and daily, checking gates, make sure everything's locked. Comprehensive safety audit, I'd really like to do something with local law enforcement in the next month or two. I need to get this on my calendar and get the right players together. Part of it is, might be waiting for a fire chief. I don't know where we are in that process. I can certainly call the town or talk to Jennifer and find out where we are. I know that we're in the process of looking for a fire chief, and that would be the next best connection for EMS, and I have local law enforcement partners that I already work with. And then there's the whole idea of, you know, is shelter in place the best for this school? If I had an issue down at pre-K or down at, say, first grade in the old end of the building, and it seems contained down there, whatever the issue is, is it okay to maybe take the other end of the building, go to our evacuation site over at the Knolls Farm if that's the case? I don't know. Right now, everybody stays put. We don't go anywhere. There's new thinking around, you know, run, hide, fight. Well, four-year-olds aren't going to fight, right? But sixth graders can run. I was with them for two days. So there's combinations of things that might work. There's a program called the ALICE program that I'm looking into that Sanford has. So what I'm saying is we're on a dawn of either tightening up what we're currently doing with some practices in-house, and also bringing in some people from the right areas to help us tighten things up. So just wanted to give you that as an update since our last time we met, and I'm hoping when the new chief is on, hoping to get to know him or her, and, you know, working with Rick Smith was great. He was a texter way and was always really, really helpful to the school.
But you also got a radio or something now?
I do, I have a live radio in my office that's for me only, that I can communicate with the York County Sheriff's Department, and my call sign any morning is, it's basically York County Dispatches, Act and School Radio Check. Copy, Act and School, have a nice day, moron. And then, and, you know, they all know who we are. Obviously, that just didn't happen overnight. It didn't happen by magic that I got this radio. So the other one is, I have the TAC line, too, which is the tactical line, which is the one that, at one of the meetings, somebody asked about that, and that's the line that you can't really penetrate. Now, you can hear me sign on, probably Jeanette, if you're on the right frequency as Act and School to the Sheriff's Department, but if I go to the TAC line, you're not hearing anything. And that's the one you go to if there's a real issue, and that's tactical support. And having somebody in the building, being able to quarterback this is, when I spoke with the administrative team the next day after we moved forward with this, you could just feel the sense of, that's a really good idea, really good idea.
Would Patty your backup?
And if I'm not able to get to that radio, anybody's my backup. How's that? Everybody knows I'm the only one authorized to pick it up, because it's not a, hey, you know, I got a lost dog up front. That's not why the calendar is showing up. We use our phones for that stuff. Yeah, yeah. So that's the safety update, and that's the last thing I have on the agenda.
Any questions about that for anybody?
Sounds good.
No? Then I will look for a motion to go into executive session as per one MRSA 4056A Personnel Matters.
I'll move, we go into executive session at 5:58.
5:58. All in favor?
It's just me, I'm good.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, everybody.